Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this session of Quispan Sis Town Council. May I have the approval of the agenda, please? It's been moved by Councillor Donovan, seconded by Councillor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. I have a few remarks this evening. I would like to remind people that the month of June is Pride Month, and we're happy to celebrate Pride Month in our community and so many others across Canada. The Pride community is a community all of its own, but it is all around us also. It's our family members, our friends, coworkers, neighbors, and people we may not know. We are proud to share this town and this region with you. You are welcome here. You are safe here. Quispan Sis is an inclusive community. Today, I attended the local ceremony marking World Refugee Day. World Refugee Day celebrates the strength and courage of people forced to flee their home country to escape conflict and persecution. There are 108.4 million forcibly displaced worldwide. Almost half of all refugees in Canada live in small cities and towns, and we are happy to provide a safe place for them to settle and to live. The theme of 2023 is "Home Away From Home." I'd like to thank Mr. Martel and Mrs. Jergudis's Grade One French immersion classes from Lakefield Elementary for visiting Quispan Sis Town Hall. They were keenly interested to learn about how the town operates and the role of the mayor. I'd also like to thank the Grade Three classes from Quispan Sis and Lakefield Elementary Schools for helping to make our town beautiful with the annual planting of marigolds in the Arts and Culture Park. Mother Nature decided to provide a little water a little early, but I had a wonderful time making new friends and planting flowers with them. I'd also like to thank the Grade Three students of the Chris Saunders Memorial Elementary School for planting marigolds near their school garden. In all, about 3,400 marigolds were planted this year. That's a lot of beautiful flowers. Excitement is building in our community over the Firefly Splash Pad. Town staff have worked very hard at getting the splash pad ready for summer weather, and I believe it will be a wonderful new addition to our outdoor amenities. The splash pad will open officially very soon, so keep an eye on the town of Quispan Sis Twitter and Facebook pages for detail. We are just a few days away from the end of another school year in our region, and I want to congratulate all of our local graduates and everyone for another successful academic year. Thank you to all school staff for the hard work that they put in all through the year. The end of school also means more young people in our community are going to be heading out to the splash pad along with going to the parks, trails, playgrounds, Qplex pool, and beaches. I would like to remind drivers to please use extra caution on the roadways as spring becomes summer. Drivers, please adhere to reduced speeds in all residential areas. We want to keep our streets safe, and we want everyone to enjoy a safe and fun summer vacation. The East Coast Games are back in the St. John Region Friday through Sunday this week. The Games bring about 2,000 athletes from Atlantic Canada and the U.S. to our area. Quispan Sis is co-hosting the girls' softball tournament at Minens Cove Field. It's terrific to see another sports tourism event include the town of Quispan Sis in its activities. Thank you to all the organizers, volunteers, and participants. Enjoy the Games and have fun. Canada Day. Come celebrate Canada Day with us on July 1st, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the Arts and Culture Park. The pirate-themed event will have bouncy castles, axe-throwing, a foam pit, tasty treats, live music, and much more. Find more details at quispansis.ca. Our summer series schedule is out with music in the park beginning July 4th. Music, movies, and movement in the park schedules are available on our Facebook page. That's all for now, and wishing all graduates tomorrow on the KV roster, they are taking their diplomas or picking up their diplomas at the Qplex, and I wish all of them best wishes for their future endeavors. I am looking for any disclosures of interest. Seeing there are none, we'll go to presentations. Oh, I'm sorry. I passed over number three, the treaty acknowledgement. Councillor Bigger, would you mind doing that, please? Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispan Sis exists on the traditional territory of the Wullestewig, Malacite, and Mikmac people, whose ancestors, along with the Passamaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Bigger. Now on to presentations, number 5A. Aldridge Drive-Shoreen Cliff Drive intersection. Speed deterrent requested due to safety risk. And we have Mr. Colin Henderson, presenter. Please come to the podium. Welcome. Happy to see you this evening.
I think I'm safe to take this off. I'm recently recovering from pancreatic cancer surgery, so I'm off on medical leave. But prognosis is good, so I'm happy to be here, smiling, standing, and healthy.
And we're happy to have you here, smiling, standing, healthy.
Mero Hera, councillors, assistant councillors, clerks, I appreciate the opportunities to speak here today. My name's Colin Henderson. I am a lifelong resident of Quispan Sis, grew up on Lyden Drive, Donlin Drive. I now currently live in Woodlay Park in Winfield Hills, and would like to speak on you. And I kind of appreciated Mero Hera's segue into safe driving, because that's exactly what I'm here to talk about today, especially in the area of Aldridge Drive and Winfield Hills. I'm sure you all have been very privy to speed concerns all throughout probably a lot of residential areas, but in particular Queensberry Drive, Aldridge Drive in our area. Funnily enough, this issue's been going on for a little while. I went back on my email before I came here tonight, and I found an email dated June 18th of 2018 that I'd like to read very quickly. It's very short. It was then to Mayor Gary Clark, who then passed it on to the town engineer, Mr. Lozier. "Good morning, Gary. I've resided at 2 Wiltshire Drive since 2006 and have recently sold that home and building a new home at the bottom of Aldridge Drive in Quispan Sis. While viewing the build with my two youngest girls, age five and 10, Blythe and Ella, Ella who's actually going to be a lifeguard this year at the Qplex and at the splash pad that you mentioned earlier, so I'm quite proud of her, I was shocked at the speed at which most cars come down Aldridge Drive and pass by the lot, which is across from the Shoreen Cliff-Aldridge Drive intersection." We're going to review pictures on that in a little bit. "I was scared myself, actually, and I race cars as a hobby. To stand on the side of the road as they pass by, speeds are easily over 60 kilometers an hour. I'm writing to respectfully request a speed deterrent. One would be sufficient, in my opinion, such as the speed bumps that are installed on Southwood Driver Minstrel, be placed just before the intersection at Shoreen Cliff and Aldridge. This would ensure children walking to school to cross that intersection are safe, that my children and others in the area, and the adults, quite frankly, and their families are safe as well." That was on June 18th, 2018. As a result of that email, Sergeant Scott of the Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force did contact me. There was a speed deterrent study done at that time. I believe since that time, there's been multiples. I'm sure somebody could access that information. I know of three for sure that I'm aware of, just from viewing the blocks that are on the street. So that was the first email in 2018. So fast forward to now. I kind of wrote this during my initial recovery from hospital, 10-day stay in hospital. So I'm kind of a little bit all over the place, but I'm going to try and put it together a little bit more succinctly for everybody. What I want the councillors to think about when I read this is something that we've all been told as children. Look both ways before you cross the street. I'm sure we've all heard it when we were kids. I'm sure we've said it to our own children. I'm sure if you are a child yourself or where at one point in time you've heard it from your own parents. What I'd like the councillors to think about is when is that enough? What variables are involved, other than just looking both ways before you cross the street? So, dear councillor members, council members, I'm sorry. "Live at 12 Aldridge Drive," this is the most recent communication that I sent. It was a result of requesting this meeting tonight, so I'm going to read it again. "Live at 12 Aldridge Drive, which is directly across from the stop sign at the end of Shoreen Cliff Drive. This is significant, because during landscaping of my property, I purposely put in the lower driveway due to this part of the property had already become the throughfare for all children to walk to school while the house was being built, both for Chris Saunders Memorial Elementary and Quispan Sis Middle School. I would have to estimate that over 100 children use this access daily, could be more. I haven't actually looked at the numbers myself, to and from school. Plus, all neighborhood families use this driveway and are welcome to, of course, to access the school playground each and every weekend. It's well-known that there are significant speed issues within the neighborhood, this intersection being one of them. I'd like to suggest to the council members that the risk is highest at this road crossing due to the high speeds, number one, of vehicles traveling down Aldridge, coupled with the vast number of children walking to and from the school. I've witnessed too many times now, especially during my recovery, I sit out my rocking chair, my perch on my deck, speeds being way too high and children almost getting hit as a result. Due to this, quote, 'high safety risk,' I'm asking council to strongly consider a speed deterrent in the form of a speed bump at this crossing. I'm not against a crosswalk that I was actually driving here tonight. We have a crosswalk for the town trails on Pettingill Road. So, you know, mostly adults use those town trails. So, again, if we go back to look both ways before you cross the street, when is it enough? When is it not enough? And when should we be seriously looking at safety measures for an area like this? The rationale behind not asking for a crosswalk, and I'm kind of contradicting to myself here, I would say that I would certainly be open to that suggestion, is that the stop signs in our neighborhood get ignored by 80% of the people. You're going to see this on a video tonight, that I see approaching them, which is not an exaggeration. I have no reason to believe that they slow for a crosswalk. I do emphatically believe that a speed deterrent in the form of a speed bump would be most effective, a most effective strategy, coupled with signage which would leave drivers no choice but to slow down. It's either slow down or ruin your car. I guess everybody's seen that before. This would be ineffective anytime a child or family was to use the crossing. The time for action isn't when a child gets struck or worse yet, killed. I cannot idly stand by and watch these near misses happen time and time again without strongly advocating for an effective solution. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to meeting you to discuss prompt proactive solutions to keep this high-traffic area safe for all of our walkers going to school." That was my first communication that I sent a couple days ago.
Mr. Henderson, I'm just going to remind you that we are on timer. I just want you to know that you've gone about halfway through, so...
Halfway through? Yep, I should be able to finish it in five minutes or less. So, Ms. Snow, I believe, responded to that, and she said that "due to my request, our area was chosen for another speeds or traffic study." And this is my response. "Dear Ms. Snow, I'd like to thank you for your prompt reply. Sadly, many in the neighborhood have been through the traffic study steps already. I think there have been over three, if I'm not mistaken. Sergeant Evan Scott, which I alluded to earlier, made contact with me almost five years ago with this very issue. Measurements devices were put in then. Sergeant Scott followed up with me after the fact, and the singular data of speed just did not show there being enough support for any further action. I cannot accept this through the high consequence risk and now requesting further action by council." Stephanie Teed's child, whose husband, I thank for coming tonight, Mike Teed, we actually work together, a great neighbor of mine, have also contacted me and been through the same study path and the same complaint path with council over the years. "The failure of a traffic study for this particular area is that it's only singular, measuring speed only, and then it's applied to a defined structure of criteria. What this study doesn't show is that the safety incidents near misses with the sheer volume of children and families that use this crossing daily. Speed is only one singular variable that unfortunately isn't showing town engineers or council the true gravity of the situation with respect to children almost being hit on too many occasions for this resident, myself, Mr. Teed behind me, and his wife, and many others in the neighborhood to be okay with initiating another traffic study that's unfortunately probably going to yield the same results. The weekends seem to be worse. Many young drivers use this area as a high-speed throughfare to access other parts of the community, Vincent Road from Pettingill, for example. I've recently been sworn at, true story, other objects thrown out at the window at me. It was a coffee cup and a can just a few weeks ago for gesturing that a high-speed motor is slowed down, actually quite politely, it just slowed down. This is well documented by others in our Woodlay Park Facebook community page, and it's getting dangerous. I'm uniquely positioned to comment on driver speeds and risks associated as I'm certified by Mercedes-Benz AMG High Performance Canadian Driving Academy in Canada at their top-level Pro Plus for both dry track racing and ice racing as well on Lake Winnipeg. I'm very well-versed in judging speed and incidents and ensuring that my descriptions by no means are an exaggeration of the level of danger that's being witnessed at my driveway crossing. If speed deterrents are not supported by council, then I can also suggest maybe school zone designation, because we're quite close to the school. I would actually suggest we're closer to Pettingill Road than for that school zone than we are from Aldridge Drive through the woods. If safety measures due to the proximity of Aldridge Drive to the school and the volume of children that use this path daily for safe access, hopefully we can get that designated if a speed deterrent isn't supported. I hope it is. I have not read this policy, but maybe if somebody could provide it, I'd greatly appreciate it. I've contacted Chief Steve Gordo and Sergeant Scott again to please drop by and discuss further. I've actually recently discussed this very incident with this very concern with Chief Gordo, and he is very supportive. I say at the end, 'I cannot stop due to the safety implications until successful resolution acceptable to all stakeholders in the neighborhood, council as well, is implemented in this case.' I appreciate your time very much, and please look both ways before you cross the street. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Lisa, did you want to play the video?
Speed number one. That car is easily going 60 into 40 zone. That's common throughout the entire day. Speed number two. Happens both ways, up and down the street. This is the volume of children, just at arbitrary time, kids leaving the school now. It is getting closer to the school end of year. So this looks like it's QMS dismissal time. So you can see the volume of kids that are coming down my driveway. They actually come out of the woods, so through the backyard of Chris Saunders Memorial Elementary, through the trail, there's a driveway on the side of my house. Everybody's welcome to use it. Actually, the property goes right to the end of Aldridge Drive. So it just became the de facto throughfare when I was building the house, and everybody thought there was going to be another home built. But so I built the driveway and just told everybody to use the... But you can see, this is the crosswalk from Shoreen Cliff Drive that crosses Aldridge, and there's no crosswalk there. There's no signage. There's no nothing. And it's on, especially the younger children in the morning is what I worry about the most. And here's, you know, this neighbor had just unfortunately blown that stop sign doing the speed that you're going to see them blow the stop sign at the very end of Aldridge Drive as well. Just know, there they go. And that's often, so that's not a one-off event. So I just wanted to kind of give you kind of a better picture and multiple scenarios of what's actually occurring. I don't know if there's any other pictures there or not. Yeah, so this just shows the crosswalk, and that's it. I think I sent a couple of other pictures today to Ms. Snow, but maybe they didn't get uploaded. But the run from Aldridge is quite a straight run down, and it kind of curves to the left as you get down towards my driveway. So it's a bit, I wouldn't call it blind, but you can get up to speed quite rapidly. And if you weren't paying attention, if there was a young one coming down Shoreen Cliff, which I've seen many times, and here's the Aldridge stop sign and intersection. This is looking straight across Aldridge, up the driveway into Chris Saunders Memorial backyard. If you continue scrolling down, you're going to see, I believe, I took a picture, up Aldridge. Yeah, so you can see the hard left-hand turn that comes down. So it's almost blind due to these trees that are on our neighbor's property. Not that I'd ever want to get rid of them, but they come down that curve quite rapidly, and you can get up to speed quite quickly. You know, you can easily do 70 or 80 kilometers an hour if you're brave enough. And I've seen people do it, and I wouldn't call it brave, but I'll actually call it the exact opposite word, which I'm not going to use right now. But anyway, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Looking at that, and certainly you had a bird's-eye view of those cars, just wondering how many of those you may have reported to the police? Because it looks like they're probably neighbors and just...
Yeah, that's a great question. We actually had to speak to a young driver just last week, and Constable McIntosh of the Kennebec Cases Regional Police made contact with the vehicle owner, and that car was taken away from the young driver. So it's happened enough that we've reported it multiple times. The unfortunate part, if you're not there and you don't have video and you don't know exactly who the driver is, and you get involved in all that with legalities and things like that. Definitely the speeds are being reported, though.
Yeah, and certainly if the car is on your street and it's speeding, it's whoever the car is registered to, I believe. So I am going to open it up for questions from councillors, but I do want to acknowledge that this evening we have Deputy Mayor Schreier virtually with us, and just in case she has any questions as well. So first we'll hear from Councillor Donovan.
Thank you, and thanks so much for your presentation. It was certainly eye-opening and, you know, very concerning to see those videos and to sort of hear you talk. I'm hoping that potentially we can come to a solution for you and your neighbors and your community. I do have a question, and it's not for you. It's for Director of Engineering, who I don't know if is here, but maybe Dwight might be able to answer it. I'm just curious if we have a, maybe not a stockpile, wouldn't be a good word for it, but I'm wondering if we have any extra, like, non-permanent, you know, speed bumps? So maybe if we didn't want to get into making it permanent, we could test out the theory of speed bumps to see if it has any effect on the traffic in that area. Thanks.
Through your worship, I'm aware that we do have what we call sort of mobile speed bumps. They were used on Queensberry Drive and a couple of our locations to sort of get a good sense of their effectiveness. I know that we're using a different style of traffic control devices on Queensberry now with the midway blockers. So they may be available. That's something that we can look into in terms of putting those as a temporary measure. But again, that would be directed through the Director of Engineering work, but we do have mobile speed bumps available.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening. My question is to you, through you to the Director of Engineering. Could we have a little discussion on what a crosswalk would look like? And I know that over the years, they've said a crosswalk has to go from one sidewalk to another, but obviously, there's a lot of areas in our town that we don't have sidewalks. And what would that look like, and if it would be a solution that might be sought after to resolve this? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Mr. Colber, would you like to respond?
Through your worship, so in terms of the actual crosswalk device, obviously, we would be looking at that movement would be within the sort of street right-of-way. So usually, it's coming from one street, cross another street into a joining street. In this particular case, one of the things that we've noted is that, as the presenter has indicated, they're actually crossing over his private property and then getting onto the street that way. So in terms of the device itself, it can be installed, you know, in the appropriate location. And then whether that's an activated device, as we have, sort of on the Pettingill Road. So in terms of the street itself, it would be able to accommodate that. I think what we have to look at outside of that is the actual fact that they're actually crossing over the private property to get to this particular device. So that may be something that we may have to discuss through this process as well. Recognizing that, you know, the property owner said, you know, it's not an issue at this stage, but in terms of putting a crosswalk at that specific location to receive people that are coming off of private property, maybe something that we would have to look at through the process as well.
Thank you, Mr. Colber. Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Henderson, for coming and sharing...
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, and thank you, Mr. Henderson, for coming and and sharing your concerns with us. I do have to apologize um that it's taken you five years and you're still here asking for the same thing. Um, I'm not an expert in speed control. I think I'm going to leave that to our Regional Police Force and our very capable staff. Um, but I'd actually like to put a motion forward that council refer Mr. Henderson's concerns to the Engineering Department to work with the residents in the area and the Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force to put in place a high-speed traffic deterrent or alternative um on Aldridge to address the speeding and safety issues that were identified. That way it's open enough that, again, I I'm just wondering, I lived on Shoren Cliff. I'm not sure if the crosswalk is a solution when you have speeders. Are they going to hit the kid on the crosswalk? So I think I'd rather let the staff um, kind of look at, you know, based on their expertise, what would be the best solution. But I think that at this point, five years later, it definitely um, I would like to see um some type of solution um offered up. So that's the motion I'm putting forward. Thank you.
There's a motion on the table. Counselor Miller, you seconding the motion?
Sure, I'll second it. I have a question after that.
Okay.
Seconded by Constable.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, thank you, Mr. Henderson, for your for your information. Actually, I I follow you on the Woodley website. So I've seen the pictures of people that have actually had cans thrown at them from from speeding drivers as well, kids and stuff. So it is a problem there, but exactly. So I I think one of the challenges we have is when you put speed deterrents on one street, people get pushed to another one. So you've got people in Queensberry and down the extension. Then now a quick way to go is go Southwood, go through through your way, through Hardwood and up, and then they go down the the other road, straight down. I forget the name, name of it at the very end. So I I like what Counselor Luck has said. I think we got to look at this. I'm I'm very happy to to hear that we do have some um spare or available um tools that we can use because I know last year we didn't have those. So we put an extra, I think it was thirty thousand dollars in our budget to to have some. Um, I think it's also very prudent and I and I see in the motion too, we also should look at active transportation because where you live in that area, everybody walks to school. And you know, right now, very gracious of yourself, you're you're allowing the kids, but I guess it's kind of hard not to allow them. They're going to walk through to get to school. So you're you're doing the right thing. Is is what kind of active transportation trail can we have? Um, I I like the thought of the 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 flashing lights at least so they can get through there. I mean, obviously there we'd have to work through the private property kind of things, but you know, the first four or five feet are technically the towns. Um, so I thank you for bringing that up. And I guess the the um, the the question I had, because you brought up about school zone, I I know it's kind of different because you're in the back of a school, not the front of a school. But I know that whole area, whether there or by Q E S as well, you've got a lot of walkers that come by. So I mean, we've talked about it up by um Autumn Avenue and that, like what do we do for the people coming down from Granite as well? Because you get a lot of people walking and there's no sidewalks there. So I think that's something for us to look also. The short-term solutions are are what's here, but long-term, what can we do with within the communities that are communities that the houses that are within like half a kilometer or kilometer? What can we do to make it safer for the kids? Because there's more and more kids all the time. So, thank you.
I think in my opinion that two on Aldridge and even on every street, you you can't really get up to speed in between them. You have to try really hard, as you know, on Minstrel and other areas where we do use them. They're a fantastic um, not only deterrent, but but device for actually proactively slowing down the speed of traffic. So, thank you. Thank you for the comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you. On the question, I'm going to go to Counselor Olson. I see that the Director of Engineering is uh virtual right now. Uh, Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Henderson, for your presentation, very well articulated. And I think that it's led to a lot of good discussion here and several suggestions on how it may be able to be resolved. But I appreciate everybody's input here and and your patience. Uh, maybe five years will be the lucky one. So, but uh, no, good luck with that and uh you have my support for having something getting done there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the motion so that the Director of Engineering knows what the motion was? So this is on, go ahead.
Through you, Your Worship, moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Miller. Council refer Mr. Henderson's concerns to the engineering staff to work with the Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force to look at putting in place a high-speed traffic deterrent solution for traffic calming in that area.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. Loche, would you like to make any comments on that?
Sure thing, Your Worship. Uh, I I think that's appropriate. That gives staff some direction. Um, if council will recall, we've gone through the same exercise on the Queensberry Drive where we've introducing mid-block uh restrictions um to some success. And when we look at the intersection of of uh Shoren Cliff and Aldridge here, um, I think we may be looking at something similar. Um, I I caught the tail end of what Counselor Miller was saying and and the concern is that we're dealing at an intersection that's not an official s- uh school zone. But the approach that we would take is looking at the speed issues initially and happen to see if there's a way to incorporate it at the intersection. So we we've got a couple of of viable options to work with. Um, of course, it all starts with a base study to see what the speeds are, the time of day, things like that. Um, and the other thing that we uh have to come to grips with is that currently a lot of our uh speed control in subdivisions is seasonal in nature. Um, in that they come down in the wintertime or just before the snow flies and they go back up in the spring of the year. So so those are the types of things that we'll have to take into account when we look at this particular intersection and and the the volumes that are there. But uh but it starts with that that count of pedestrians, traffic speeds. Um, and and obviously the key to all this is um if you can't have police there on a regular basis for enforcement, then it becomes what methods are self-monitoring and that's where the traffic calming comes into play. And and again, um, we have some temporary measures that we can implement, uh, you know, do that base study, introduce some temporary measures, see what impact it has had. Uh, and then uh look for a future council budget to see if there's something that permanent should happen. So those are the mechanisms that we have in the short term, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loche. On the question. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, just Counselor Miller had mentioned um a comment that um I kind of not intentionally left out of the motion. So I'd be okay with amending it. He had kind of alluded to keeping in the last part of the original suggested motion about exploring active transportation. Um, so if he's okay with that, just we could add that last last section back in from the original motion. Um, just so it does get, um, you know, it gets captured and down the road, we can look at that area because it is highly trafficked amongst kids to to access the school.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. On the question. Seeing there's no further discussion, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you very much for being here this evening, Mr. Henderson. Have a good rest of your evening. So I wanted to thank you very much for your support for that. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you. Public hearings, item number six, seeing there none. Item number seven, minutes of the previous meetings. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move that the minutes be approved as prepared, please.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Seeing there none, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Item number eight, unfinished business. Eight A. Counselor Kirk Miller, discussion on Qplex as a regional facility, pros and cons, staff report from Acting C A O, Mr. Kennedy. Over to you, Mr. Counselor Miller.
Should you mind if I just stand up there? I've been on team calls all day.
You may go wherever you wish. As long as you keep a smile on your face.
All right. So thank you very much. Um, so basically, uh, everybody's got the presentation. We know we talked about uh the Qplex before and it's been a topic of discussion. So it's a real quick slides, there's like six slides in here, but there's a lot of words. So um, if you just go to the next page, sorry. Is when we look look at the the Qplex, originally twenty-five years ago, that when we did the regionalization for Saint John, we were um originally it was operating costs, there's no capital in it. But not only that, there was it was legislated by Saint John Region, but back then we had Saint John, we had Gondola Point, we had East Riverside, we had Fairville. There was very few communities that had anything. So it made sense to have everything regional. Um, and the Trade and Convention Center and the T D also, we know that the contracts, this is a side note, but they're they're negotiated by Saint John. So they didn't shouldn't really put that in there. But anyway, since then, what's happened in twenty-eleven? We now have the Qplex. We didn't have that when everything went regionalized. Um, capital's now included. So ironically, we've had these discussions at council already that the capital went from about seven hundred thousand dollars a year over a five-year period average for Saint John now up to about two point three to two point five million. So it's tripled. The Aquatic Center and and the T D are now basically forty years old, give or take. Canada Games was nineteen eighty-five for for some of us may not have been born by then, but it was it was a long time ago. Um, Qplex was originally in the draft document that we got from Minister Atlanta, said it might be there. And at that time, there was no, at least from my perception and what I what I've read and what I heard and when I was there, there was no really big concerned voice to council at that time. Um, Quis Pam sis reps, we did vote to remove it. They have the right to do that, but when you vote to remove it from the thing, it's just like if Saint John came and said, I want to remove the T D station, we'd say, perfect, go ahead. Um, so when it talks about it was debated, it was debated, but it that's fine. If we said it's going to go, it's going to go. So um, they wouldn't debate to have it there to pay more money. So and the next thing, this is a bit hard to read, but for those, when you have it there, this is right from our website. It talks about the Qplex is more than just a rink. It talks about, you know, we we've got the walking track, we've got the wave pool, we've got Y M C A, we've got the the conference center, we've got a lot of things there and on top of that exterior, we've got, we've got pickleball, we've got our community gardens, we've got a lot of different things. So this is all right, straight from our website to says what it is, but it says we're much more than a rink. Um, and I would say we're much more of a regional or facility than the T D station. To me, the T D station is primarily just a rink now and that's all choose for and Avenir Center is going to get most of the stuff that's coming to our place. So next, please. So these are just examples, a lot of pictures. Didn't put a lot in there because but it's everything from Jeetakadi, it's from the, we talk about the Vito's play there. Sea dogs play some of their games there, their transition games. We have Remember and Stay. We've got blood services there. You can go to the to the pool and get your medallions there for your swimming lessons. And so we'll just flip through some of the some of the slides. So recently we had the para- para hockey. We've had Envision Saint John. This is great. Envision talk about this is great for the Saint John region. We had everybody there. We had other events. Again, CPR. We've had the the games. We've we've had everything from um um blood donor, we had Skate Canada. So we we co-chaired that with our friends from Saint John. Love to cheer. We had the Saint John Regional Real Estate come and do their conference here, barbecue, we've had events. We've got community expos, we've got free skating, we have free walking. Uh, we know that we've got people from all over our region using our our facilities, which is which is fine. Um, so to me, we don't, I really don't want to have more regional facilities. I think we got too many. So that's just me. But if we're going to play this game and we're in this game for the long term, it seems because we're talking about they're looking at regionalization and you read what's what the minutes are that uh Mr. Kennedy sent out, what's what they're going to be talking about, different things is what the future is going to be like. Um, and and we, I know there was a comment in in the staff report about the fourplex. If they build a fourplex, we'd be asked to pay for it. Well, I don't think so. This is a new game. So we've already done our own study and we paid Quis Pam sis taxpayers money. This says we have enough ranks. So I think if they build something, that's fine. We've already got, we've proven we have enough ranks for our community. So I think we're fine. Um, when we look at, we're more than a regional facility and I say more than the T D station, big time. We got a pool, we got a walking track, we've got a conference center, we've got all these other things. So to me, it should be part of it or parts of it should apply or at the bottom, if it's not, not the bottom, in the middle, I think through the Regional Commission, if we're not being at it, we should get some credit. Because in twenty, in nineteen ninety-seven, when they made these things up, uh giving us regional facilities, it didn't exist. But we have a lot of things that we're being charged for. We have the pool, the conference center, we've got a lot of things. So nobody's helping us out. And if you look at the taxpayer, so in the in the staff report, it's about five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of operating capital. Or we didn't talk about operating budget. We didn't talk about capital expenses. That's probably about another two hundred K. And so if you look at it, to me, that's six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars annually that if we were part of the regional facilities, that we would be saving. So that's taxpayers' money. So that's just my my spin. I, you guys have already heard me talk about it many times. But I just figured I'd come in officially present like that. And I got four minutes and twenty seconds left. So I beat you, Mr. Baker. So I'll go sit back to my spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so you've heard Counselor Miller's presentation. We are well aware, I am the Chair of the Regional Services Commission and the we we do have five facilities in the city of Saint John. They're in city central. There are no other facilities in the outlying region. Uh, it is as as Counselor Miller said, it grew out of the facilities that um that came about back in nineteen ninety-eight to avoid amalgamation at that time. And those facilities, we did not have any choice in uh when the government reform was upon us uh back at the beginning of twenty twenty-one. We didn't have any choice to maintain or remove any of those facilities. And there are some there that I think, as Counselor Miller has said, uh are still up or should be still up for for discussion. And uh certainly the Trade and Convention Center would be one of them. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. Um, this has been an interesting sort of discussion. It's been all over the news and we've certainly been talking about it for a long time. One of the main things that I wanted to touch on is there seems to be a lot of scare tactics um when it comes into putting the Qplex um as a regional facility. You know, one of the main um arguments, I guess, against it is that we're going to lose control. I personally don't see us losing control. You know, if you look at places like T D Station and the Aquatic Center, they're all city-owned buildings. They have outside sources and namely, you know, Quis Pam sis, Rossay, Grand Bay paying for their um facilities. But at the end of the day, they retain control over them. They own them. You know, they can sell them at any time. They can do pretty much whatever they'd like with them. So the argument of us losing control, um, in my opinion, is sort of moot. I don't think it's, I don't think it's there. Um, you know, you'd have people argue that it is, but um I just don't see it. You know, one of the ways that we potentially could lose control, I guess, is, you know, when we become a regional facility, if it does happen. Um, you know, Quis Pam sis can't charge for for memberships for our Quis Pam sis families. And you know what? I am bold enough to say that I don't think that's a big deal. I think, you know what, if if it comes down to us not charging for memberships and allowing, you know, um people from Saint John, people from Rossay, people from Grand Bay and to use our facilities as they currently are right now and we can offset some of our some of our um, you know, expenses, I personally think that's a good idea. Um, and you know, I'm I'm in I'm in support of uh, you know, sort of what Counselor Miller has said, but that's that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I think just to, I guess, want to thank Counselor Miller for bringing this up. I think he does make some very good points in terms of a regional facility. Um, you know, I think when I look at some of the other facilities in smaller communities around Saint John, they truly don't um live up to the word regional, whereas I think the Qplex is one of the exceptions where when you think regional and the types of events that we host there and the numbers of people that use that facility, um, I definitely think it would be considered a regional facility and probably would have been in the past if it was existent at the time. Um, so again, I I, you know, I would like to um see us So, again, I, I, you know, I would like to see us at least explore the possibilities. One thing about the motion is, is kind of almost like, like not a double negative, but I guess if we're gonna put a motion on the floor, I would like to have it positive, so it's very clear if people are voting for or against it. Because right now, it's, you know, again, it's, it's a negative motion, so it might be confusing in terms of voting. So, I mean, I guess I'll put the motion forward. But I'm gonna move that council proceed with a formal request to add the Qplex to the list of regional facilities at this time. So, it's very clear what people are voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Counselor Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Luck. I guess, a, a side note, I don't know if you're okay with changing it, is if it's not part of the regional, that we would actually get credit for the Qplex. Because again, I, I would rather have less regional, but I think we have enough that we shouldn't be paying into some of the other ones. So.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Either part or, or get credit for the Qplex. Get credit in lieu of.
Your Worship, so the wording would be that council proceed with a formal request to add the Qplex to the list of regional facilities at this time, or, or?
Get, get credit for the Qplex.
Get credit?
Receive credit.
Receive credit for the facilities that we have that are due to Saint John.
Okay.
Of the region, not of Saint John.
And who are you directing that to?
Credit for regional facilities.
The regional facilities are, are all, they're five separate entities that come under one umbrella. But they, I don't think they would be able to issue any monetary compensation.
Yeah, so it would be credit for the Trade and Convention Center and TD Arena. So, instead of paying into those two, we don't pay. Saint John pays the extra.
I, I see Deputy Mayor Skryer, your hand was up. I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy first. Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counselor Miller, for the information and the presentation. So, I, I know when we go back quite a few years, when we were in first talks with, about establishing the Qplex, and the name just happened to stick when, I don't think it was a name that was, that everybody said, oh, we're gonna name it the Qplex. It was sort of a title on a document, Qplex, and it stuck. So, that's sort of an interesting tidbit. But, you know, I, 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 I struggle with this one, because I believe that the, the Qplex and the community of the Qplex, which includes pickleball courts, like you mentioned, which includes tennis courts, which includes walking trails, it's more than just a Qplex, it's a community. It's, you could almost refer to it as our community center, our wellness center, our, you know, gathering center for big events. So, it's, it's, it's more than, as you mentioned, it's more than a rink. And so, to me, that's, I take great pride in that, in Quis Pam Sis, that we have developed, and the staff have brought the Qplex to such a level that they, we are attracting national events, international events to our area. And so far, it's just been, I believe, just with hockey, but provincially, we've brought in gains. And I believe that there's more growth that's going to happen in that area. And I, like I said, I take a lot of pride in that. And I struggle with giving up control. And I know that we can debate or argue on what control looks like. But when I talk to residents, and when they say to me, the Qplex is A-plus. What you do out in Quis Pam Sis with your standard of, of service is so incredible that we're, we're, we're very, very proud. And so, I take that as a compliment to the staff, to the compliment to the council, and compliment to our community that we're hard to keep it the way it is. And so, with that, I'm not ready to give it up, if you want to say, or say that we need to go regional. I, I would like to see us, the whole Regional Service Commission is on, just getting under, their feet under them, moving forward. You know, I would certainly entertain a motion like this a little bit further down the road, when we see the bumps and the bruises and how things are gonna pan out. So, like I said, I struggle with it. But at this mo, at this time, I'm not that comfortable enough to vote in favor. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Baker, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I sort of agree with the Deputy Mayor to a large degree. I also agree with the concept that in spirit, I think the Qplex is certainly a regional facility, insofar as we make use of it for various and sundry regional events and activities. Even when it comes to memberships that we sell, the staff report indicates that thousands of memberships are sold, and that some of those are people who live within our region, if not within our town boundaries. So, I feel like the spirit of it is that certainly, it serves the greater region. And I think we're glad to do that, and we're glad to take a few dollars in the process to, to kind of help offset the deficit that exists, which was maybe, which is sort of the progenitor maybe of the whole idea here. I, I also agree that, with what the Deputy Mayor is saying, that I think we have, it's not hard to say, to get agreement with the statement, we have a real jewel of a facility with the Qplex. There's no doubt about that. To me, the distinction, there's a, there's a disparate nature between the Qplex and TD Station, for example. Not just in terms of the size of them, as is outlined in the staff report, but to the Deputy Mayor's point, I think, point, I think that from a community perspective and a community building perspective, I see the Qplex as a gathering place, not just when, you know, a, a good band comes to town, and not just when there's a hockey game, but for myriad reasons that we've, that Counselor Miller outlined. And I'm hesitant to sacrifice control and autonomy of that aspect of what we have with our Qplex. I think that being able to equalize, to, to, if I can use that term, the financial component, is a perfectly fine endeavor. I have very little confidence based on what I read in the staff report, and when I look over the criteria for being added as a, a regional facility. I think that the board that, that exempted the Qplex a year ago is likely to do the very same thing again. That's my gut feeling on it. I don't have any more evidence than that. And I guess the last thing I'll say is that the motion is a bit, is a bit hard for me to understand. It sounds, like I can support the idea of, so like Counselor Miller, you're saying with the credit aspect, like perhaps we could be exempted from the costs related to, let's say, the TCC in town and TD Center, TD Station, rather, in, in lieu of the fact that, or in deference to the fact that we're covering our costs related to, okay. I think to research that, I think that to research that is a perfectly fine motion, but I can't support the first piece of this motion. I would vote against it on that basis. So unless it can be parsed out as two separate endeavors, I, I feel like we're asking two different things in one motion here. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy, please, acting CIO.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I think, Your Worship, we're having a spirited agreement on this issue, that we all certainly appreciate the value that the Qplex brings to our community. And when we celebrated our ten-year anniversary, a couple of years ago, I wrote the piece that was on Facebook, and I think the first line was, imagine Quis Pam Sis without the Qplex. And it's really hard to do after the, the first ten years, and now in twelve and thirteen years later. So, my issue with pursuing this, and I think Counselor Baker just said it much more eloquently than I could, is that it's not going to get anywhere at the next stage. Because why would any other community, be it Rossay, Saint John, Grand Bay, Hampton, whomever, vote to add an additional facility to the five regional facilities, when there was no vote with the initial five? They were mandated by Minister Allen, the provincial government. These have been your five regional facilities for, for twenty-five years, and they will continue to be. There has been a very robust push involving, Your Worship, Mayor Grant and Mayor Dusset to push forward to have the Trade and Convention Center removed from the regional facilities. I think those three mayors are, are resolute in their opposition to having the Trade and Convention Center as part of the regional facilities. And I think that council might want to consider making that an election issue. We know that there's an election between tomorrow and October twenty-first of twenty twenty-four. So, perhaps that's something that we could have municipal candidates come in here and, and meet with council and say, this is something that the Trade and Convention Center, we went on a tour last week, or a couple of weeks ago, it was part of the Regional Facilities Committee, Your Worship was there as well. And the questions that the folks at the Trade and Convention Center were on the receiving end of suggested to me that the, the resolve to have them removed is still very strong amongst certain municipalities within the region. But it just doesn't make any sense whether council was united and, you know, had a firm unanimous vote to move forward, to push to have the Qplex added to the regional facilities, because I just don't think there's any chance that it would ever happen. In terms of the credit, again, the same issue, this was provincial legislation that was imposed upon the Saint John region with no local voting or consensus agreement, nothing. This is the way it's going to be. So, we're stuck with that, and we've been told repeatedly that we need to learn to live with it, that this is the way it is and to move on. But I don't think we've quite moved on with the Trade and Convention Center. TD Station was part of that tour a couple of weeks ago as well. And the new management there with the, the OVG company that has taken over is quite optimistic, confident, that they will be able to return Harbor Station, TD Station now to its glory days. It's gonna take twenty-four to thirty-six months probably, but they anticipate that they're going to leverage the connections that they have, that they have venues down in the northern New England states, that if someone's coming through Portland or Bangor, that they can leverage them to come through Saint John as well. So, as much as TD Station over the last little while, probably post-pandemic, has been not much more than an arena, although they did have a basketball event there on the weekend as well with the Maritime Women's Basketball Championship, they're hoping to get that building rocking like it once did. So, again, as I said off the top, I think we're having a spirited agreement. We all love the Qplex and see the benefit that it has for our community. But just in terms of adding it to the regional facilities, I think that would be a real tough ask, since the same people that that ask would be made to have already said that they have no interest in adding any other facilities to the five that have been mandated by the provincial worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. On the question, Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd just like to say that I concur with the Deputy Mayor's comments. I've observed the maturing of the Qplex over its twelve years of operations, and I've taken a lot of pride in that. I'm very impressed with the quality of the facility that we have created and maintained with, with a strong oversight by the, by the workers there and our, our staff here. So, I would like to retain the ownership in Quis Pam Sis.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. On the question. There are no further comments. So, as pointed out by Counselor Baker, there are two motions in one. Counselor Miller?
Just, just split, vote on each one, if that's okay. If the, if the.
Could we have a mover and a seconder? So, the first motion was, was moved by Counselor Luck. The counselor, that council proceed with a formal request to add the Qplex to the list of regional facilities at this time. So, that would be one motion.
Yeah, and the second motion would be.
So, we're gonna vote on that one first. So, on the question, the, the motion is that council proceed with a formal request to add the Qplex to the list of regional facilities at this time. On the question, please vote now. Motion defeated, two to five. The nays were.
Your Worship, Counselor Donovan?
Whoops.
Counselor Miller.
The, the ayes were, were Counselor Miller and Counselor Donovan. The nays were Deputy Mayor Skryer, Counselor Olson, Counselor Baker, Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Luck. So, the, the request to have the discussion for the Qplex as a regional facility has been denied. The second motion, Counselor Miller, I think that was yours.
Yes, yeah.
So, will this, will this show up as a separate item?
Yeah, should, yeah, I'll have to break it into two.
Could you read what your motion would be, please?
I would move that council ask for consideration of credit for the Qplex for, in, in lieu of payment for the TD Station and the TCC. That we would get our credit for those, since we have an existing facility.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Through you, Your Worship, did you want it to note Trading Convention Center and TD Station?
Yeah.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question. Would you like to read the motion? Oh, did it come up?
Yeah.
Yeah. The motion was request that Quis Pam Sis receive consideration of a credit in lieu of payment for facilities that we have that are duplicate of Saint John's Trade and Convention Center and TD Station. Please vote now. Motion carried, five to two. The nays were Deputy Mayor Skryer and Counselor Olson. Thank you. Item eight B, ratification of email poll to send letter to Minister Daniel Alain opposing Bill Forty-five, Local Government Governance Commissions Act. Counselor Thompson?
I would move the motion. Do I read it?
Yes, please.
I would move that council ratify the email poll conducted by Mayor O'Hara, June ninth, twenty twenty-three, authorizing correspondence from the town to be issued to the Honorable Daniel Alain, expressing council's opposition to Bill Forty-five, a bill that would allow the Minister of Local Government and Local Governance Reform the proprietary right to override the decisions of councils by way of repealing or amending municipal bylaws.
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Baker. On the question. Counselor Olson?
No.
No? All right. I'll just make one comment on that. This was supported by the Union of New Brunswick Municipalities, because it was felt that by having Bill Forty-five, it would take too much of the control away from our local governance, governments. And it's really important that all of us stand up to maintain the authority that we have within our own communities. So, I'm very pleased that council did support that. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to say, too, that while we were at the, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
I just wanted to say too that while we were at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference, I was really heartened by the solidarity that was shown by municipalities that were at that conference from all around New Brunswick coming together. Anglophone, Francophone communities, large communities, small communities. Many had already taken the opportunity to formally express their disdain and outright disgust, I think in some cases, for this bill, provincial bill. And I just, you know, I think that it's good that we're able to sort of link arms with municipalities from around the province on this and that certainly we're not the only ones, as I'm sure everyone understands. But I was really, as I say, I was heartened by that meeting we had in Toronto. Thank you.
Well, having had accusations thrown at many of the municipalities that we are not in lockstep or agreement with much of what we do within our regions, I think this is clear evidence that we are in lockstep. So I'm going to go now to Deputy Mayor Stryer.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to add thank you for sending the letter. I think it was really important that we speak up and voice our opinion on this as a community and as a council. I would also like to add that unfortunately, the bill did pass. It's my understanding that the bill passed last week. So I guess our job is not finished yet. We need to be able to speak to them about the regulations that are going to be put in place. So even though the bill has passed, a lot of the details will be in the regulations. So policies and regulations, the regs they call them. So hopefully we'll still get a chance to voice our opinion and perhaps maybe even follow up with a letter saying that we realize that it has passed, the legislation has passed. However, that we would certainly like to have our voices heard when it comes to development of regulations. So if that should be a motion, I'm welcome to put that forward. Or if the mayor, in your capacity, just want to pass that on to the department, whatever council wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stryer. And once again, on the question, it's very evident that with the voices as councillor Bigger expressed, there was a hundred percent support from the communities that were represented at the meeting that we attended. And this is just an indication that even though the municipalities feel that they know what is best for their communities, we're being told otherwise at the provincial level, which is very unfortunate. On the question, it's been moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Bigger. Please vote now. Thank you. Item eight C, ratification of email poll, re-award of two thousand and twenty-three scholarships to KVHS graduates, and there are three of them.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of being part of the committee that chose these three individuals. And I will say that just like every year, we have some exceptional students passing through Quispamstess, going on to, you know, explore their future options. And my sincere congratulations to all of them, whether they win scholarships or not, they're all very smart and important to the region and communities like ours. So I would move that council ratify the email poll conducted on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to award the two thousand and twenty-three town scholarships to three KVHS graduating students as recommended by the graduating committee with names to remain confidential pending the graduation ceremony.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Bigger. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number nine, correspondence. Nine A, correspondence from councillor Emma Olson, request to proceed with municipal water extension on Hampton Road and business section of Pettingill Road area. Councillor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Subsequent to my letter requesting information and action on trying to understand what's in front of us to put water in the Hampton Road and around on the Pettingill Road, received an extensive report from our Director of Engineering and Works. And it looks like it might never, ever happen. It's in the fifty million dollar range if you take a look at all of these different phases and that. And I mean, it's just mind-boggling and with the awareness that we should make sure that we don't forget about maintaining our existing infrastructure versus new infrastructure. Now, I'm not really sure where this is, where this is all going to go, but the thing is is that I think we've got to get a handle on just what is ahead of us in bringing this forward. Because right now, every year, we just seem to pass over it because we don't have the money or it's not lined up to be included in a budget. It's huge, it's huge money. We're talking about going from, from just Kipper's property down to the intersection at Campbell Drive. And it's just a humongous pile of money. And a lot of other things are being held up because of that lack of water there. We want to redesign the Hampton Road and that can't take place until we put the water in. We've got property that we want to develop or have developed and they can't do that without water. So I don't know. It's a catch twenty-two. What, where do you start and how do you start? And I think, I think that Mr. Lozier has suggested that we have to have a real serious discussion on our priorities as a council and how we're going to address this because it's not going to be done by itself. And I know that attending FCM and that, all you hear is about major projects being built by other municipalities and that. And I just wonder when we can jump on that bandwagon and get access to some of that bigger money and also access some of the provincial money through RDC here in New Brunswick. So I don't know, but we got to, we have to start somewhere and we have to start sometime. So I'm open to other suggestions from other members of council here, but it's a, it's a big, it's a big responsibility and it's a big challenge. And I'd just like to see us get started sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Olson. I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Stryer.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you councillor Olson for bringing it forward. And I too, it's a big number. They are big numbers and they're scary numbers, especially when you don't, we only have one payer and the taxpayer. So they are scary numbers, but the infrastructure at some point has to happen. So the question is, how strategically are we going to go about this? And so I would be very willing to help and sit on any type of committee with Director of Engineering as to how that we might be able to break it down into sections, how we might be able to, who we need to lobby, how, sitting down, having those heart-to-heart conversations about our community and how we need to have the infrastructure in place. We know that even going the other way up the Hampton Road, there's all sorts of land that's been sold and opportunities for development and there's no water up there either. So which is the best way to come down? Is it best to go down Hampton Road or would it be best to go up the Hampton Road? But anyway, I just wanted to add that if any way that I can help with that to see it forward, how we might be able to arrange meetings, get our priorities, strategize on our priorities and who we're going to ask to help us with this, it will certainly move the town forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stryer. I'm going to remove myself from the chair and I'll ask councillor Thompson to be the chair. I have spoken with developers who have wanted to develop certain sections of the Hampton Road and walked away when they realized that there wasn't water. So what that does is that it also takes away the ability to receive more revenue. If we have apartment buildings on the Hampton Road and we have to refuse those or if they refuse to build because there isn't any water, then it's sort of a catch twenty-two because if the buildings are there, we get revenue for other things within the town. But if the water isn't there, then they're refusing to build. So I think there are lots of discussions that have to be had. The other thing that I look at, when I look at the Hampton Road, and I did receive a handwritten letter from one of our residents, a cyclist, who assured me that she will not drive the Hampton Road any longer because of potholes and the narrow portions where cars have attempted to navigate while she was navigating and made it very difficult for her. But when I look at this as being the conduit to our town hall, you want it to be welcoming, inviting and in some ways beautiful. And we don't have that yet. It's more, it is a commercial conduit, but we can beautify this and it can be all part of this development. So there are huge dollars involved and I guess we need a starting point. We need to start somewhere, as councillor Olson identified, and we just need some direction on that. So I will go to councillor Miller.
Thank you, worship, and thank you councillor Olson for bringing this up and deputy mayor as well for comments. I'm fully supportive of trying to accelerate. We did a water study, I'm going to say about five years ago, I can't remember the exact, but to do water in the whole town was roughly seventy-eight million dollars at that time. And that would be putting a second water tower over on the other side of the railway tracks down towards Squire Drive area, give or take. But I think we do have to, one of these days, we're going to have water issues, we're going to try to have to put water in quickly. So I think the quicker we do this, we kind of been doing a little bit here, a little bit there. But, you know, and my thought is, and I know originally I looked at the plants, I don't have them in front of me, but you know, you go down towards at least Donlin, then you turn up. But if you went all the way down to the lights and even a little bit down on the, on the Pettingill, you could, you know, an apartment would fit nicely, as an example, right behind, not that I make apartments, but right behind where the Chopper's Drug Mart that is. But I also drive down Rossay and I'm seeing massive apartments being put up everywhere else. So there is a want and a need for that and there's a big housing challenge all within Canada when you add a million people a year and increase your population by two-point-five percent. That's something we're not used to. And New Brunswick, I think, last year grew for the first time in gosh knows how many years. I think we added forty thousand people. So, and I think that's going to continue. So I would fully support, I mean, obviously, any money that we can get help with, whether it's federal provincial matching, whether it's some type of thing, but I would, I would fully support having it as a high priority, starting in two thousand and twenty-four. And like deputy mayor was saying, which, which end of the Hampton Road? Maybe both. You start on one side and you go out the next side because there is a lot of land where it's accessible and, and you know, looking at our housing starts, they're still continuing. So those, that straw on the water. So I'm fully supportive and thank you for bringing up councillor Olson.
Thank you, councillor Miller. Councillor Bigger.
Thank you, worship. I thought it was really fitting that councillor Olson was the one to bring this forward for the meeting tonight because he knows probably better than anybody around this horseshoe how long this has been, you know, an ongoing question for this town. And I thought that it carries a lot of gravity when someone with councillor Olson's, you know, history here brings this forward. And I know it's not flippantly, you know? And I'm finding agreement with everything that's being said here. And I want to just mention about the deputy mayor's comment about perhaps striking some kind of working subcommittee to really focus on this so that we don't lose touch on it. I think that I would be very glad to serve on something like that as well. But I think that that's perhaps a great way to bring, you know, the requisite focus to it as we go forward. I'm only two years into this and when I came into this, I, I really wasn't thinking about the need for upgrade to municipal water infrastructure in our town. But in just the short two years that I've been on council as of this month, I can, I see it now as absolutely necessary for the evolution of our community. And I think that the Director of Engineering and Works report is of great benefit to us in that it gives, you know, it sort of, it sort of inserts the requisite, you know, realism into blue sky thinking, a little bit about what's next with water upgrade and infrastructure. And, and the steps, it's sort of a relief to know that some studying has been done on this formally and we have some basis, a foundation, you know, to begin from. And somehow we have to find the way to marry that up to the vision that we have and the conviction that I have, that I can't give you receipts for, so to speak. But I'm certain about the future of our town relying on, as the mayor has alluded to and, you know, we've discussed this before. We have, we have opportunity for commercial retail development here. High-density housing is sort of the watchword of housing infrastructure expansion in communities right across the country. And we have a shortfall when it comes to that. We are stymied. I was at the Fire Commissioners Meeting last week. Of course, we have our Rossay counterparts on that and I was speaking with a councillor and the CAO in Rossay. And I was saying what councillor, councillor Miller just mentioned. You drive down Hampton Road on the Rossay end or up past the Bayview Credit Union and there's half-done apartment buildings all over the place. I want those in our town. I live in one of them currently and I think it's a good place to live, actually. And we've had many developers come in here over the last couple of years with plans to put that, whatever it was, hundred units or whatever it was up here on, along Pine, Pinewood and, you know, onto Pete and that, and then down on the bottom of Milliken. Councillor Luck and I were talking about this before the meeting. And we're limited. And when we were at the FCM conference, again, just nationally, this is a conversation that's happening all across the country. Infrastructure is wearing thin. The urban renewal of the sixties that went on is wearing out in communities all over the country. And, and not just large, huge urban areas, all kinds of small and medium communities, even rural communities are working hard to find solutions to upgrade infrastructure for kind of, you know, the next generation of evolution in a community. And I think that we're becoming sizable to the degree that there are people who, you know, live here and never have to leave our community to, to live and to work and if you work from home or, you know? And I want us to be able to welcome more and more development into our community to be able to service the retail and commercial needs of our residents. And I think that people can be, I hope this won't be a, I hope this won't be a statement I'll eat later, but I think that sometimes people can be a little romantic about wells. And everybody thinks they have magic water. But the use of a well on a property for a domicile is fine for that family, but it doesn't necessarily serve the greater needs of our community. And I feel like that's what I'm here to try to do, is to try to consider the balance between what we have for resources and what we should have and could have and what we need to drive towards. And so with, I mean, I've lived in a couple of houses with wells out here and they were great. And so of course, it's wonderful, but I think the evolution of our community demands this. And so I, as I say, I appreciate the Director of Engineering and Works report. I think it outlines some very important things that I don't want to, I'm not going to be discouraged by it. I know that's not the spirit in which it's presented. I don't want the best to be the enemy of the good as far as that goes. And I guess that's all I'll say. I don't think I could underline or overstress how vitally important I feel like this is at this time for our, for our town. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Bigger. I'm going to go to deputy mayor Stryer, please.
Yes, your worship. Thank you. I'm willing to, I would like to put a motion... Yes, Your Worship. Thank you. I'm willing to, I would like to put a motion forward that council strike a working committee to work with the Director of Engineering and the Department of Finance as to developing a strategic plan or a plan for council to consider moving forward on water infrastructure.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Counselor Thompson, please.
Is the motion, where is Counselor Schreier? Oh, is the motion pointed towards the Hampton Road Water System priorities? Or are we talking anywhere?
Deputy Mayor, that's pointed to you.
Yes, Your Worship. The, I would say water infrastructure for the town of Quispam Sis with priority given to the Hampton Road.
Thank you. On the question, please vote now. The motion was moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Who was it seconded by, please? Counselor Bigger. Thank you. Motion carried, 7-0. If I may ask council to move down to item number 10? 10B, yes, thank you. Deputy Mayor Schreier has to leave in 15 minutes. And because I wasn't here for the public hearing, I have to recuse myself from the meeting. So Deputy Mayor, it's in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just bringing it up here. We're on number, item number 10B, rezoning. Description: Proposed parking lot development and storage shed to support business at 170 Hampton Road. Proposed municipal plan bylaw amendment number 054-06 and the proposed zoning bylaw amendment number 038-43, consideration of the third and final reading, subject to finalization of section 59 CPA Agreement. Would council, it's opened up for discussion?
Is that me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Counselor Bigger.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. I'm prepared to move that council give third and final reading to this. So perhaps I'll just offer that motion. Council, give third and final reading to proposed bylaw amendment number 054-06, pre-designating the property identified as 8 Leiden Drive with PID number 54619 from residential R1 to central commercial CC, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in the section 59 Community Planning Act Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Bigger. May I have a second there? Somebody, Counselor Olson? Is that what I see? Counselor Olson, a second there?
Yes, I'd like to second the motion. Thank you.
So we have a mover and a second there on the question. Is there any questions on the question?
There was just a typo. Instead of pre-designing the property, it's re-designing. And I've made the correction.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Do I have any questions? Could I ask you, Counselor, counsel to please vote now? Motion carried, 7-0. Thank you. I'd ask her worship to please resume the chair.
Deputy Mayor. There are several motions.
Oh, that, oh. I'm sorry. There's another motion? Oh, second motion? Could I have a second there for moving second? No, this is the third and final, is it not?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. It's Counselor Bigger. I'm going to move the second motion on this. So, oh, pardon me. I'll just lend my second to that then. I'll second Counselor Thompson's motion.
Counselor Thompson, move the motion. Counselor Bigger, second the motion. On the question.
I know that council give third and final reading to the proposed bylaw amendment number 038-43, rezoning the property identified as 8 Leiden Drive with PID number 54619 from residential R1 to central commercial CC, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in section 59 of the Community Planning Act Agreement.
Thank you Counselor Thompson. Do I, any questions?
Through you Deputy Mayor, both the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw amendments now to be read.
Thank you. Could I have somebody please to read them?
Yes Deputy Mayor, I'll read that. Okay, so this is, I'm reading the amendment here. Is there an order? They need to be? Okay, so I will not read the amendment first then. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so this is amendment number 054-06 to municipal plan bylaw number 054, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis respecting the Quispam Sis municipal plan. Yes? Okay. Being enacted by the council of the town of Quispam Sis, the municipal plan bylaw number 054, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis pursuant to section 24 of the Community Planning Act of New Brunswick, is hereby amended as follows. By re-designing, I think we got it that way, the following property from residential to commercial on the future land use plan attached to bylaw number 054, subject to the property owner entering into a development agreement pursuant to the provisions of section 59 of the Community Planning Act 2017, Chapter 19. A parcel of land consisting of approximately 3,131 square meters identified with PID numbers 54619 with civic number 8 Leiden Drive and situated to the rear of the central commercial property at 170 Hampton Road. First read April 18, 2023. Read the second time April 18, 2023. Read third time and enacted June 20, 2023. And shall I continue? That was the municipal plan. Okay. Secondly, amendment number 038-43 to zoning bylaw number 038, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis respecting the Quispam Sis zoning bylaw. Being enacted by the council of the town of Quispam Sis, the zoning bylaw number 038, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis respecting zoning pursuant to the Community Planning Act of New Brunswick, is hereby amended as follows. By rezoning the following property from single and two-family residential R1 to central commercial CC, subject to the property owner entering into a development agreement pursuant to the provisions of section 59 of the Community Planning Act 2017, Chapter 19. A parcel of land consisting of approximately 3,131 square meters identified with PID number 54619 with civic address number 8 Leiden Drive and situated to the rear of central commercial property at 170, pardon me, Hampton Road. First read April 18, 2023. Second reading April 18, 2023. Read third time and enacted June 20, 2023.
Thank you Counselor Bigger. I believe that completes everything, Ms. Snow.
We have to vote on the second motion.
Yes, through you Deputy Mayor. Now the vote on the zoning bylaw amendment, number 38-43.
Perfect. Can I have a mover and a second there, please?
Counselor Thompson and Counselor Bigger have already moved and seconded.
Okay. Please vote now.
Through you Deputy Mayor. Motion carried, 7-0.
Great, thank you. Could you, someone let the mayor know? Is she still in the room? Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Schreier. We'll now move to item 9B. Counselor Carrie Luck. Request for update from Engineering Department. You're most welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Request for update from the Engineering Department. Read the town's plans to address potholes and poor road conditions as a result of not proceeding with 2023 Capitol Street upgrades. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you Worship and thank you to Mr. Loge, the town engineer, the Director of Engineering for providing that update. I'm happy with the update. I'm not, I don't think he's on the line to speak to it. So I'm happy to, oh, is he? Oh, okay. So I guess if he's on the line, I'm not sure if he's interested in just giving a quick overview. I was happy to see, I just wanted to know what we had planned, just so when residents start to ask, we have some answers for them. So I appreciate the update in that, what the staff are doing to kind of keep cars on the road and address the potholes in this year of not repaving the road services. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Luck. We have a motion there if you'd like to move that. Sure.
I'd like to make the motion that Mr. Loge's update concerning asphalt repairs be received and filed.
It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Please turn your mic on. Oh, you muted her. Okay.
Okay. Oh, usually, sorry for the confusion. Usually they unmute me. Thank you for the report on the roads. I'm wondering if there's another way to get this information to the public. A lot of people have been asking about how the roads are going to be upgraded this year. Is it possible to post this on our website as a community announcement to let people know?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Schreier. Mr. Rozell, would you like to comment on that? Are you able to put that on our website?
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, I don't see any issue with putting that on our website at the earliest convenience.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. There's your answer. Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. Please vote now. Oh. Gary Loge? Mr. Loge, did you want to comment?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to offer a comment with respect to the report for council. What I would suggest, rather than verbatim being posted, we would want to actually have a few more specifics and dates and things of that nature. Just in its format as it is, it's fine for council's consumption, just to give that overview. However, I think I would like to be able to work with our operations superintendent to ensure that we've got the appropriate streets identified. You know, I identified the fact that they're be working on the collector roads first and my listing is not in any calendar order. So I would probably be best if we look maybe perhaps at a weekly update. You know, these are the scheduled areas for, you know, repairs, things of that nature, rather than just having a general all-out blast of that nature. I think it would be more effective and more informative if we can give specifics with respect to the proposed work areas on a weekly basis. And I would propose that we perhaps look at a weekly works update and work with Mr. Rozell in formulating some type of messaging that links not only our operations side, but any capital work that's going. So we have a weekly update that comes out for the utility project on the Gendola Point Road. If we see streets, as I mentioned in my correspondence to council, if we see streets that require severe repairs and we come to council and have that identified as a capital program, we do want to identify the schedule as well. So I think as opposed to just a blanket posting such as this, I would much prefer if we have a targeted and properly identified message for the public at large. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schreier, is your hand up?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you Counselor Loge. I think that's a wonderful idea. I forget the words you used, a weekly road update? I think that would be very helpful to the residents. So I don't know if we need a motion for that. That can just be done by council and our, with Mr. Loge working with Tim Rozell. So I really like that idea. Thank you.
We won't need a motion. We're just going to keep it at the operations level and I already got the nod from Mr. Rozell that he would connect with department head, Mr. Loge, to do that. So thank you. Please vote now.
We voted, didn't we?
Motion carried, 7-0. Counselor Noah Donovan. Item 9C, discussion on returning to boardroom per committee of the whole meetings. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. My request is very simple and quick and it doesn't require any money. So basically, as you might have seen in my email, I'm just looking for us to return back to our council boardroom as pre-COVID. It's my opinion that, you know, hosting our committee of the whole in the boardroom is a little more informal and it allows for us to have more, in my opinion, meaningful and sort of direct conversations rather than having to sort of wait for microphones and sort of the officialness of being in the council chamber. So I would respectfully ask that consideration of my proposal, that council approve the request to return to the boardroom for committee of the whole and that any logistical concerns that may arise can be addressed during this process. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Donovan. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Second. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. On the question. Yes, I am. I'm going to remove myself from the chair, Deputy Mayor Schreier. What I like about being in the council chamber for both meetings is that we have the technology when that's necessary. And just as an example, Deputy Mayor Schreier was out of town and able to join us virtually. I think that is something that we have to consider. The other thing, because- that we have to consider. The other thing, because we are streaming all of our meetings, it means that, uh, with all the paraphernalia that I have, I don't have to, uh, rush in from a very small boardroom and, uh, and, and try to get set up. And I, I think the, the clerk, it works better for the clerk as well. Um, as far as having informal meetings, I, I take the, uh, closed meetings very seriously and do not ever want to see them as being informal or, um, to have an open discussion, we would have that no matter where we are. Uh, I hope the council feels that they can speak, uh, at any time on the topic at hand, so, um, uh, I, I actually prefer to be here in the council chamber for many, many reasons. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, your worship. From a, an operational perspective, um, being in the boardroom is challenging. Um, we look at our organization as being a team, and I was over a meeting with the Works Department folks this afternoon, um, and we talked to them about how we're all part of the same team, and our department directors don't work in silos, so oftentimes there can be issues that can affect more than one department. Um, I don't think it would be efficient to having to go down the hall and call somebody else in and say, we need you in on this file. Um, that particular room, um, stuffy is the word that I would use to describe it, um, since the start of COVID, um, well, I guess before I say that, um, to have an official council meeting, uh, we would need to have nine people in that room, the eight members of council, assuming everyone was here, and the clerk, so that's nine people, uh, since the start of COVID. Um, from my own personal perspective, I've been in a meeting with more than nine people in that room once, uh, in the last three years, and it was, uh, awful, for lack of a better word. So, um, when people are eating in there, you know, there's not a whole lot of room to begin with in that room. Uh, there's no elbow room. Some people are still, um, concerned with COVID and, uh, other communicable diseases in there. If we were in tight quarters and someone wasn't feeling well, a pretty good chance it would spread throughout the entire, uh, team of council members and executive team members. So from an operational point of view, um, we think that there is certainly value, uh, in staying in the, uh, in the council chamber, um, for committee meetings, which is what we've been doing for the last three years. Your worship, you mentioned the, the technical aspect, that, um, if you do have someone remotely, um, which wouldn't I say, I wouldn't say is normal, but it's certainly becoming more commonplace, um, that's challenging, um, within that room as well. And I know just, uh, from your worship's perspective, uh, you haven't, um, had the pleasure of, of, uh, chairing many meetings in there, but you have, and it can get a little unwieldy, um, just because it's difficult to keep track of who's next in line, which is certainly not an issue, um, with the next in queue process that we have in this room. So, and that would be my two cents on that, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, uh, I certainly, uh, appreciate, uh, Counselor Donovan's, uh, spirit of, you know, wanting to be able to kind of communicate as effectively as possible, and true enough, you know, we have the luxury, let's call it, in the closed session of not being streamed to the public, and this, it's great to be able to brainstorm on items and whatnot, but everything that's been mentioned, I, I, I tend to agree with. Uh, I think that if through COVID, uh, one of the things that became, uh, far more, uh, acceptable is people dialing in remotely. Dialing in is a little outdated, I guess, maybe, but, uh, as we have even tonight here, um, when it comes to presentations and so on, I think that it's, it's post-COVID, that's become a very acceptable way for people to participate in the capacity. This room has been designed to espouse that capacity, you know? And another thing that I would suggest that we consider is security of council. Um, we had a discussion here in this, around this horseshoe about, uh, with presentation from the police force, if I'm not mistaken, about our capacity to summon emergency services in an emergency situation if needed. Uh, and, uh, I mean, quite frankly, we have an escape route over there. Uh, and, uh, that doesn't exist in there, really. And so I, I would certainly feel more secure being, uh, in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, and thanks, everybody, for your, um, opinions and, um, sort of concerns. Um, you know, it's very clear to me that we're not really getting anywhere with this, so I, I would respectfully, um, request that my motion be removed, and we, uh, can just move on to the next item. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Item ten A, bylaws. Counselor Luck, request for update on bylaw number zero-two-six, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis, respecting licensing of taxicabs, re-ability to use licenses from other jurisdictions to offer taxicab services.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I guess I'm going to, um, put the floor over to, um, the C, uh, CAO, Mr. Kennedy. He was going to provide a quick update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, your worship, and I appreciate the follow-up from Counselor Luck on this. As council is aware, as part of our strategic plan implementation, um, we are going to be undertaking a full policy and bylaw, uh, review, hopefully, hopefully later this year or into Q-one of two thousand twenty-four. Um, the taxi bylaw is a bit challenging simply because it involves more than just us. Um, it's always easy to, uh, to deal with bylaws from our own perspective, but, um, this one is a little bit challenging because it does involve RSE and the Canada cases regional police, because the police are quite clear that it's of benefit to them if we have, uh, the same bylaw in both municipalities. So we have had some preliminary discussions, and we are meeting again, uh, tomorrow morning, um, at the police station, so, uh, hopefully I'll have some more information as to where we are and, uh, moving forward at the next council meeting in July, your worship.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, Counselor Luck, any follow-up? Thank you. Item ten C, proposed traffic bylaw amendment number zero-two-seven dash three-five to establish a no parking zone on Firefly Crescent and Lake Road. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. Um, you know, have we, as we've heard over the past couple of months, there's been some concerns about traffic in that area, so hopefully, um, this bylaw passed will give those residents some, um, some satisfaction that we're doing every, everything we can to, to meet those, um, needs. So I would move that council give first reading to proposed traffic bylaw amendment number zero-two-seven dash three-five, uh, bylaw amendment that will create a no parking, parking zone on Firefly Crescent and Lake Road.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, sorry, I, I missed the tour of the Firefly earlier today, but my question to Director of Recreation was, did we put up signs that says parking is down there? Okay, I missed it. So, no question, all good.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Is Deputy Mayor gone? She was leaving. Motion carried, six zero. Yep.
Sorry, your worship, but I know that file has already been cleared, but to Counselor Miller's point about the parking in that area, um, through the Department of Community Services, they've actually gone through the Google process, and the address, if you search Quispam Sis splash pad, comes up as a fifteen equality lane, so if someone is following MapQuest and Google directions, it will take them directly to where we want them to park, and they can make that very short, two-minute walk, uh, through to the splash pad, your worship.
Thank you, and let the record show that Deputy Mayor Schreier has left the meeting. Counselor Thompson.
Um, I move a second reading of to the, to the, uh, proposed traffic bylaw amendment number zero-two-seven dash three-five, a bylaw amendment that will create a no parking zone on Firefly Crescent and Lake Road.
Please vote now. Motion carried, six zero. Thank you. Item ten D, Counselor Luck, proposed adoption of a flyer distribution bylaw.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I would like to just speak to this for a minute, but I'm not sure if you want me to put a motion first and then come back. Okay. So I'll just give a quick rundown of the rationale, and then I'll put the motion forward, but, um, I'm sure all of us have had experiences with some unwanted flyers, uh, showing up either as we're snowblowing, or, you know, just flyers that, you know, are soggy and are, uh, at the end of our driveway. So this was really the impetus for putting this, um, proposal forward and making the motion that I will soon be making. Um, but basically, uh, just recently, the Saint John, uh, City of Saint John, um, addressed this and did create an unwanted flyers, um, uh, or flyers bylaw to address the nuisance issues. Um, some of the things that they'd identify were some of the flyers that are not wanted, um, are nuisance to dispose of, um, they continue to pile up on the residences that are un- unoccupied or abandoned, so it can also be a safety risk. Uh, flyers are left in the driveway which can damage snow blowers, the cost of disposal is borne by the taxpayer, and also the impact of litter on our community and environment. So, um, it has passed and is now, um, part of the Saint John bylaws. I think they did a great job, um, developing their bylaws, so I guess I would propose that we use some of their great work to look to see how we can learn from it and, uh, look at implementing a similar bylaw. One of the things I will mention is that the Saint John, uh, flyer distribution bylaw includes provisions that forbid distributors from delivering flyers to a property if a no flyer sign is posted, and delivering flyers to a property if there are no flyers in the driveway. It should be noted that Saint John bylaw does not apply to newspapers, election advertising material, community association newsletters, or any materials produced by levels of government or their elected officials, which are all permitted under the law, and there is fines accordingly. Um, so I did attach in the, um, submission a copy of the Saint John flyer distribution, and I guess the motion is, um, that the correspondence that I've submitted, um, to enact a flyer distribution bylaw, be referred to staff to draft a bylaw similar to the one recently adopted by the City of Saint John for council's consideration at the July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Counselor Olson?
No.
No? Please vote now. Motion carried, six zero. Onto new business. Item eleven A, award of tender number two thousand twenty-three TQ zero-five dash nine drainage improvements. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move the council award the drainage improvement tender, two thousand twenty-three TQ zero-five dash nine to Lowbitter Steel Trucking Limited for the bid price of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents plus HST.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Counselor Luck?
Oh, sorry, no.
No? Okay. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, six zero. Item eleven B, approval to authorize consultants to proceed to Part C, two thousand twenty-three TQ zero-one dash three, Gondola Point Road lift station number five upgrades. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Based on staff review and information provided, council direct and globe engineering to proceed to Part C, contract administration and inspection period for tender services of the FRP number two-oh-two-three TQ oh-one dash three, Gondola Point Road WWPS upgrades phase two, Gondola Point Road Station Five, for the upset fee of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents plus HST.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, six zero. Thank you. Item eleven C, Highlands of Queensberry subdivision phase seven, council ascent, PID twenty-four eighty-five thirty-four six-one-three zero-eight-six, New Brunswick Limited Developer. Counselor Donovan.
I would move that, uh, council grant ascent to the Highlands of Queensberry, phase seven final subdivision plan, subject to execution of a standard subdivision development agreement with the town, so that the plan can be stamped and signed by the town clerk and development officer for registration in the provincial land registration system.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, six zero. Thank you. Item eleven D, legal services renewal, Richard Mcfee. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I move council accept Richard Mcfee's offer to renew his legal services contract for an additional year, effective immediately and expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, based on the same terms and conditions as the existing agreement.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Counselor Olson, did you have a question?
No, sorry.
Counselor Donovan, did you have a question?
Thank you. Um, I'm just curious. I don't have any concern. I'm just wondering, um, for my own curiosity, is, is there, is there a reason that we're doing it, um, yearly? Is it something that's been done in the past? Because it was my understanding that last year, I believe, was supposed to be Mr., um, Mcfee's, last year, I believe he was retiring, or maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm just curious as to why we're doing it yearly, and I don't know if that's something that's been done in the past. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to Counselor Donovan. It's been practiced over the last couple of years that we've extended, uh, Mr. Mcfee's contract. We think we get tremendous value for the work that he provides, and his picture's actually on the wall down the hallway here at Town Hall. He's a former counselor. Um, his institutional knowledge is extensive, um, and he's willing to continue and provide us with his service for another year. We do have long-term plans to bring a, an in-house solicitor. Um, we physically don't have the space right now to have that person, um, physically in-house, and we want to have someone here rather than working virtually, uh, when we ultimately get to that route. But for now, um, having him at the same contract, there's been no, uh, inflationary increases over the last number of years, we think is a tremendous value for council and our staff, uh, especially some of the folks who work with him on a very regular basis. They are extremely happy with the service he provides to us, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. Item eleven B, update to IT policies, staff report from Administration Services Coordinator, and policy number zero-six-nine, information technology acceptable use. And item number two was zero-seven-zero, mobile, uh, device policy. On the first one. Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, your worship. I move that council approve the revisions to policy number zero-five-nine, information technology acceptable use policy, as presented by the- as presented by the administration services coordinator to align with the current standards and practices as it relates to information and communications technology and cybersecurity.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Miller, and I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy, please.
Just one typo for the record, your worship. It's policy number zero six nine.
Thank you for that. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Miller. Please vote now. The person? Motion carried six zero, and item number two. We could have a mover on that, please. Counselor Thompson, please.
Worship, I move that council approve the proposed revision to policy number zero seven zero, mobile device policy as presented by the administration service coordinator to govern the acquisition, usage, and management of town provisions, mobile devices, and personal devices used for communication and/or access to town IT resources such as email and/or town data.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by, if I could have a seconder, please. Counselor Miller. On the question. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Just an inquiry. On the bring-your-own-device component of this policy, I just wanted to inquire, perhaps our acting CAO can answer this, about how congruent our approach is with other jurisdictions. And, you know, I'm thinking specifically of the the point about the town having the authority by virtue of my having signed this and being in agreement with it that, you know, my personal phone can be confiscated if required by the town related to information that's, you know, on my phone by virtue of me accessing town email and so on and so forth with it. I just wanted to confirm that that is sort of a best practices case, if I could.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. I'll turn over to Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to Counselor Bigger. Certainly, our administration services coordinator is involved with some national organizations and she is zealous, I would say, when it comes to ensuring that our system is protected and certainly after what happened in St. John a couple of years ago. So she is always keeping her finger on the pulse as to what those best practices are and ensuring that we make these changes when appropriate. And we acted quite quickly when the TikTok frenzy occurred a few weeks ago as well. So yes, we're certainly on top of all of those items and are ready to adapt when necessary, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. On the question. Anything further? Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item eleven F, Queensberry Heights subdivision phase fourteen C, local government services easement. Motion on the table? Would somebody like to read the motion? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'd move council grant ascent to the Queensberry Heights phase fourteen C, amending subdivision plan so that the plan can be signed and sealed by the town clerk and approved by the development officer as per section eighty-eight bracket five of the Community Planning Act twenty seventeen, chapter nineteen, bracket CPA bracket, and upon registration, local government services easement privileges vest to the town as per section eighty-eight bracket seven of the CPA.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Counselor Donovan, please. Okay. Motion carried six zero. Thank you. Item number twelve, reports. Counselor Donovan.
Received and filed, please.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, just on the question, I would draw people's attention to item twelve C, Quest final Quispam Sis Smart Energy Summary Report for twenty twenty-three. Certainly some interesting reading there for anyone who is conscious of the environment and climate control, greenhouse gases and so forth. This town has done a lot of work to be a part of a winning team to ensure that, you know, we reduce our greenhouse gases and that we use whatever mitigation factors are available to us to prevent floodings and so forth. So on the question, Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I just also wanted to draw attention to item twelve E regarding the letter sent to the Honorable Gary Crossman, our Minister of Environment and Climate Change regarding the dust and sand and gravel and so on that's been bothering and irritating our residents on Parkside Drive. And I just wanted to say I appreciate our acting CAO's efforts to get that letter off and look out for the interests of our residents over there. And I hope that the province will, you know, conduct themselves and take it seriously and have a little review of what's happening there because we certainly don't want them to be bothered by that.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor, oh, sorry. Moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Business arising from committee of the whole. It wasn't any, was it?
No, your worship.
And looking for an adjournment, please. Moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question. Please vote now. Everybody have a nice rest of your evening. Hope you find joy in the coming days. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Have a good night, everyone.